Our invocation will be offered to us by Earlanger Police Lieutenant Shawn Sims. Lieutenant Sims, thank you.
Sir. About our head. Heavenly Father, we thank you for these dedicated men and women that are the leaders of our community. Lord, tonight as they come together, we pray that you give them wisdom and a boldness to make decisions that are just and right. Lord, we ask that your divine providence guide them in their decisions and their work that they do. In all this, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I'll call the November 4th, 2014 Meeting of Earlanger City Council Order. Ask if you all will please stand while we pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Every couple of years, our city council meeting seems to fall on Election Day. And continuing an Earlanger tradition, we come here and go back to work. Roll call.
Mr. Longshore.
President.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp.
Here.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
We have a quorum. We may go. Vicki, of course, is with her husband this evening, who she wanted to stay home with him, so I understand that. You all should have on your, have received minutes of the regular council meeting of October 7th, 2014. Are there any corrections or additions to be made at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to be adopted. Motion by Ms. Sudcamp, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, now's the time on our agenda for special presentations. The first special presentation is supposed to be a secret, but I don't know if it's still a secret anymore, but I'm gonna read a proclamation. This is a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Earlanger, Kentucky, "To all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas fifty years ago Frank Wickman began his professional journey as an attorney in Earlanger with his late wife Helen by his side. Two years later, he became a prosecuting attorney for the Earlanger Police Court. In 1974, Mr. Wickman also began serving as Earlanger City Attorney, a position he holds still today. What began as an opportunity flourished into a career-long commitment to the Earlanger community and to municipal law. And whereas in 1980, Mr. Wickman purchased John Corman's legal practice, partnered with Attorney Linda Schaefer, and opened Wickman &amp; Schaefer. They practiced law together for twenty-seven years until Ms. Schaefer's departure. Mr. Wickman's daughter Kim Quinn had already joined the practice as an attorney. Anita Stefan remained with the practice as an assistant. His other daughter Kristy Arthur, also an attorney, joined the family business, which is today known as Wickman &amp; Associates. And whereas Mr. Wickman and his daughters and Ms. Stefan are dedicated to those they represent and to the Earlanger community, their law practice covers a wide range of legal issues and includes dispute resolution. They take pride in the community as business owners and employees, current and previous residents, members of local organizations, and involvement in local government. And whereas the city of Earlanger is honored that Mr. Wickman and Wickman &amp; Associates continues to be part of Earlanger's community. In appreciation and respect for the work, commitment, and tradition Wickman &amp; Associates has given Earlanger residents over the years, the city of Earlanger would like to honor Mr. Wickman and his associates by celebrating their fifty years of success in Earlanger. Now therefore, I, Thomas L. Rouse, Mayor of the city of Earlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim November 5th, 2014, to be Wickman &amp; Associates Day in Earlanger, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens, given under my hand and the seal of the city on the fourth day of November, 2014. Frank, congratulations." We also have keys to the city lapel pins for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much, Mayor. It's, like I said before, it's not work, it's fun. And I really appreciate everything that this city council and this city has given to me and my family. Thank you very much.
You've got some family in the back of the room. Let's all turn around and wave to Wickman &amp; Associate family.
Where did you hide them all?
They're all hidden out there.
That's why you came out and got me.
He was gonna go out there and spoil the surprise, and Sherry had to go out and grab him by the back of the head and bring him back in here. Okay, congratulations Frank, fifty years, wow. I think I've been practicing law thirty-six, and I really feel old, so fifty.
Like yesterday. Cheesel. Thanks there, Mayor.
He's still, you know, it's like the Everetti Bunny, he keeps clicking away.
There you go.
Okay, now we've got some state champions. We always like to honor our state champions. This is another proclamation. As I get ready to read this, I would like for the St. Henry High School volleyball team and coaches to come stand in front of the podium here. Come on up, folks.
Come on, Mayor. Straight across. Straight across. You all done this before.
This is a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Earlanger, Kentucky, "To all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas in 2014, St. Henry High School's girls volleyball team, led by head coach Maureen Kaiser and assistant coach Sean Schwartz, had an exceptional season. And whereas the girls volleyball team defeated Monroe County, Harlan County, Lexington Christian, Washington County, Allen Central in the semifinals, and Green County in the finals to become the 2014 volleyball All-A State Champions, their third championship in a row. And whereas, the members of the 2014 St. Henry Girls Volleyball Team are seniors Natalie Gurren, Kendall Kraus, Carly Lemkool, Ashley Noble, juniors Danny Knoll, Joanna Rabitsky, Kayla Rigler, Cassidy Schreiber, Brooke Shea, Janelle Tobler, sophomores Paige Noble, Madison Reed, Savannah Stevie, and statisticians Emily Batton, Abby McLaughlin, and Megan Oldfield. And whereas, team members Natalie Gurren, Carly Lemkool, and Janelle Tobler were selected to the all-tournament team, and Kendall Kraus earned MVP honors. Now therefore, I, Thomas L. Rouse, Mayor of the city of Earlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim November 6th, 2014, to be St. Henry Girls Volleyball Team Day in the city of Earlanger, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens, given under my hand and seal of the city of Earlanger on this fourth day of November, 2014. Congratulations, Crusaders." Our city clerk has a copy of the proclamation for each one of you, and who wants the original? You can have it. We're really proud of you. Congratulations. You want to say anything? Speech, speech.
I'm a member of, you know, St. Henry District High School. This is my twenty-fourth year at St. Henry. I was born and raised in Earlanger, and this is truly an honor on behalf of St. Henry and for our volleyball team. We were thrilled to be in attendance tonight. I'm learning a lot. Congratulations to Frank, all of his kids have attended St. Henry, and most of the family we hope to have at St. Henry, so. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. (applause) You gonna do Mark Stewart's? David? Now it's time for our service award ceremony. David? And Mark Stewart. Front and center.
Well, thank you all. You all know Mark, when he was informed that he was getting his pin tonight, you know, in his very jovial way, how Mark is, certainly volunteered to come here, so here he is, so.
Glad to have you, Mark.
He told me to be brief, so I will be brief. Mark came to us in November of ninety-nine, so as you know, this is his fifteenth year. So, he started at the Northern Kentucky Area Planning Commission, now the Planning and Development Services of Kenton County. And he came here with already certified as the building inspector, so he was ready to go. Mark is a very, very good asset for me. Keeps everything running smoothly with the permits, the zoning, both zoning and building. Keeps me apprised of everything that's going on with all the other stuff that I've got going on, so he keeps me up to date. So, in keeping with Mark's wishes, I just want to congratulate him on fifteen years.
Want to say anything, Mark?
Please. It's been interesting and not boring, fifteen years, but it has been very quick. I can't believe it's been fifteen years already. I'd like to thank you all for your support, and we'll just keep it going on.
Dave, you ready?
Do have a service award pen for Steve Lump this evening. He cannot make it, I believe today is his shift day at Fort Thomas, so he started with us twenty-five years ago, and I know you remember that.
Oh, stop.
Come on now.
Yeah, he's one of the babies I trained.
Yes. I think he's close to retirement age, right?
Oh, shut up.
We would just like to, thanks Steve, and we'll make sure he gets us.
Give you more thanks. Now it's time for the mayor's report, and given the tone and nature of the evening, I have no report. We'll move on to the next. Reports of standing committees, public safety and police, Ms. Sudcamp and Ms. Pitts.
One moment, please. Technical difficulties.
Okay, we have an attaboy for Josh Nezzy and Joe Gonzalez. Josh is brand-new on the scene, and we had a lady that wrote a letter to them. She was eighty-seven years old, and she lives on Shady Side Drive, and she wanted to thank the officers for changing her tire a couple weeks ago at the cemetery. What a neat story is that, huh? She said they were wonderful with her, and just wanted to let you know how much she appreciated them and the department. So, you know, just one more example of where we go one step further. End of report, chiefs in house.
Chief.
I have nothing further, sir.
Any questions of Chief Aaron's or the committee? We'll move on to public safety, fire, and EMS, Ms. Skidmore, Mr. Dunhoff.
I have two letters to read, and this is kudos to the fire department. This letter was received from a mother discussing a run we made for her son to Silver Lake Rep Center in September. Dear EMS heroes, there are no words strong enough to appropriately express our gratitude. On September the fourth, two amazing EMS staff responded to a call at Silver Lake. These individuals saved our six-year-old son's life. The emergency department medical team, along with the PICU and neurology teams, certainly did their part as well, but your care gave him the opportunity to survive. Andrew was discharged in the middle of last week and is doing remarkably well. His official diagnosis was viral encephalitis, shock, and respiratory failure. He only spent two and a half days on a ventilator. They could not determine the cause for this horrific event. In all the haste in the Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center Emergency Department, we neglected to thank Andrew's first responders. We praise God for your intervention and the noble career you have chosen. While these snacks feel like a trivial gift compared to the gift you gave us, we hope they will provide some comfort during long days or nights, and may God bless all of you and your families. Love, the Irwin family. And it says, "A strong, great job goes out to the firefighter/paramedic Doug Rolfe, firefighter/paramedic Kyle Shower, and firefighter/EMT Chase Autry on their efforts to save this young man's life." You can clap now, then I'll do the second one.
Dave, you'll make sure this gets in their files, right? Alright.
And the following is a message received from EMS coordinator Rhonda Wolf discussing exemplary performance by two of our firefighters. I would like to take a moment and thank Randy McMullin and Jay Kelly for providing exemplary service to one of our Earlanger residents. A resident called 911 requesting transport to St. E. Florence because his wheelchair was missing, and he believes it was left at the hospital from an earlier hospital visit. Firefighter/paramedic Randy McMullin and firefighter/EMT Jay Kelly responded to this call and transported the patient to the hospital, located his wheelchair, and then transported him back to his home. This type of act is what makes the Earlanger Fire EMS Department one of the best of its kind. I am so proud of these two gentlemen, as they are truly serving this city with integrity and pride, and displaying true professionalism.
And we have a bid to be read later on in the meeting that Assistant Chief McQuarrie will bring up, and he is in the house.
Do you have anything to add?
Nothing further.
Any questions of the committee? This is the time to tell you, if you guys want to leave, you can. We won't be offended. We will not, we will not be offended. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations, ladies. See y'all on 215, 2015. That's up to you, isn't it? Okay, I didn't want them to feel like they were captive audience being held here. The next is the Public Works Committee, Mr. Cahill, Mr. Brown.
Yes, yes, sir. So, you should have gotten your report from Mr. Bogart, just to let you know about the leaf collection. We actually, Mr. Bogart's team got eleven and a half total loads of leaves for the first week, so that's about two-hundred-and-seven cubic feet they've gotten. So far this year, and that's just in the first week, so it's a great service we're providing for the community, and I see people pushing them out there already, waiting for us just to pick up those leaves. I think it's great. Potholes, we have been repairing those, you know, that's my favorite subject, the potholes. But the pothole line is not open yet, but it will be soon, and then Mr. Bogart will be answering it personally, and he is in the house, because Mr. Brown is busy right now.
Anything to add? Any questions of the committee or Rick? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Administration Committee, Mr. Longshore, Mr. Burke.
I've got a couple things before we get to Mr. Longshore. I want to announce the Administration Department will be closed the 27th and 28th of November, which is Thanksgiving. The garbage will be picked up on Thanksgiving Day. What else we got? We've already collected over three-and-a-half million dollars in taxes in the month of October, which is really good. Passports, fifty-six passports this month. Total for the year is twenty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And the last thing is, to give you a little report on the farmer's market, how they did this year. Through May through October, gross sales was over seventy-six thousand dollars.
Wow.
That's great.
That's good stuff right there. So, that's all I've got. Mr. Longshore.
I'd say a few reports on committee meetings on 10/21. We had a meeting regarding the zone change request for Doggy Day Care. The committee decided we'd go forward with that. Also, meeting on the tax increment financing, just want to report progress, as well as progress on the edge incentive as well. And Missy Anderson in the house.
Missy?
I think progress.
Any questions of the committee or Ms. Andrews? Alright, move on to the Finance Committee, Mr. Howard, Mr. Blankenship.
The auditors have completed their fieldwork and are now busy preparing the comprehensive annual financial report. It should be ready for a formal presentation at the December Finance Committee meeting. We had a Finance Committee meeting on October 21, at which time Greg Engelman presented an overview of the fiscal year 2015 budget amendment, which is on tonight's council meeting agenda, and you were also sent a copy of the September 30, 2014 financial statements on the 20th.
Greg Engelman's in the house.
Mr. Engelman? Any questions to the committee or Mr. Engelman? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Friendship City networking. That's Ms. Cahill tonight.
I know, I don't know what to do. She tells me what to do, so I'll do it all tonight. Okay. And thank you, Becky. I ask her for hard copies, I can't stand to sit at those computers right now. I just, I gotta get mine in front of me. October was quite an eventful month here in Earlanger. The month began with Earlanger participating in the library's first-ever Fall Harvest Festival on Saturday, October the 4th, from one to five. There were booths, music, and hayrides. First-time event on a very chilly day, the attendance was good, over two-hundred visitors to the city booth. It was excellent. It was really a bad day, but it was really great with the hayrides and everything, excellent. And Becky was sticking it out there with her, her great apple cider was awesome. And then the next was the city's pumpkin patch party, which occurred on Friday, October the 17th, from six to eight, at the Depot Museum Park. There were games, hot dogs, cotton candy, popcorn, and drinks. Making a return this year's event was the Haunted Caboose, featuring the ghostly conductor, our own councilman Jim Brown, the Weeping Widow, Fay Whaley, the Historical Society, and the evil character played by Mike Dancing. Evil character, Mike Dancing? Oh, okay. Out of character. Another popular attraction was the face painter who had just moved to Kentucky, and is credited for being the makeup artist for Cirque du Soleil Performance Group. It was another sunny but windy evening. The expert assistance of Public Works Crew, the event was held on a gorgeous grounds landscape to perfection. Did an excellent job setting it up and cleaning up and everything. Public Works Crew, Rick thanked them all, they did a great job. The event saw a particular number of new volunteers coming to assist, including several students, a business owner, Mary Ryder, and others that lent a hand that day and evening. The city is particularly grateful to the sponsorship of Silver Lake Kroger Cultural Council, who provided all the drinks for the evening, including apple cider, water, hot chocolate, as well as delicious clementines and apples for all the children that got in their bags. And last but not least, the city wishes to extend thanks to Bluegrass Meats for donating six-hundred hot dogs for the celebration. And then the next event was the city participated in the annual trunk-or-treat hosted by Earlanger Baptist Church, and that was on Sunday, October the 26th, from four to six, and then over a thousand children participated in that. And then October wrapped up with the city participating in the library's trick-or-treat party. That was Wednesday evening, October 29th, from seven to eight-thirty, and that had over two-hundred children. The upcoming events are Senior Thanksgiving Luncheon Tuesday, November the 18th, and Thursday, November the 20th. So, we have two, two, alright? That's great, because we can accommodate more people. That's excellent, great, good job. And it's from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty at the library. This year, there will be two CDs of a hundred for senior citizens, or Senior Thanksgiving Luncheon. Colonial Cottage Turkey and Dressing will be served to seniors by city and library volunteers. There will be a trivia and a few added surprises this year. Reservations are being accepted by calling the library at 859-962-4000. This is a great event, I'm glad we doubled it up, because we always could never accommodate everybody. That's great. Then we're going to have a Christmas tree lighting ceremony Friday, December the 5th, at the Earlanger Depot Park Museum, from six to eight. The city of Earlanger is hosting its first-ever tree lighting ceremony at the beautiful Depot Museum Park. The event kicks off with lights coming on at 6:00 PM, followed by carolers, hot chocolate, and a visit by the big man himself, Santa. Other details are still coming together, but do plan on joining us for the lighting for the big blue spruce at the entrance of the park. More information will follow on our website and Facebook page. The city of Earlanger is hosting its first-ever tree lighting ceremony. Oh, okay. Alright. And then Sunday, December the 7th, the Earlanger branch of the library from one to four, that's our holiday extravaganza. What a better way to spend a Sunday afternoon with the family. Come on over to the library for the annual holiday extravaganza, featuring carriage rides, a visit from Santa, and press. Bring your own camera and prepare to get into the spirit. That's it.
Ms. Hopkins? You have anything to add? Is that all, Kathy?
That's it.
Very good. We'll move on to reports of special committees, the cleanup Earlanger committee. Mr. Cahill, do you have a report this evening?
No report.
Okay. And then the Friendship Garden Committee, Patty?
We're good.
I know that. You're working it, huh?
Yes.
You all have heard the reports of standing and special committees. I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion by Mr. Burke, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Any of the representatives from the organizations that we affiliate with have any reports this evening? Next on our agenda is reports of city operations. First, Mr. Vioxx, our city engineer.
Yes, sir. We have a number of projects going on at the moment. We have put a couple of those on, the contractors on hold, only because they haven't yet been able to start the demolition of some of the streets that we're gonna redo, and so we're holding them off to springtime, so we don't have them open up during the wintertime. They're making great progress on the roof, and Rod informed me tonight that he no longer runs to the basement when a dark cloud comes over, so. That's all I have, sir.
Alright, any questions of Mr. Vioxx? Next is our city attorney, Mr. Wickman, fifty-year Wickman.
Thank you, Mayor. I, again, have no report, except to thank you all very much for the proclamation and the honor, and just very humbled by it, because it's a pleasure to work with you all.
It's an honor to have you, sir.
Any questions of Mr. Wickman? Okay, next, our city administrator, Mr. Fields.
I have no report. I know, you're shocked, I know. We're good.
Any questions for Mr. Fields? You've heard the brief reports of city operations. I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion by Mr. Burke, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Correspondents, Ms. Hoffman.
I have one. Missy Andrews received a thank-you card from Terry with KLC. She said, "Thank you so much for helping to judge our KLC awards."
Does any member of council have any correspondence? Seeing none, we'll move on to the time of our agenda that we reserved for citizens and public comments. We have had two folks sign up. First is Mike Winkler.
My name is Mike Winkler, and my little talk here might be a little premature, but I work for a company called Clean Air Concepts. We're based out of Cincinnati, Ohio. I've been with that company for over thirty years. We've been in the business of manufacturing ventilation exhaust systems for the fire stations for twenty of those thirty years. And I just learned this evening that we were not going to be the vendor recommended for this bid opening, and I have some reservations about that, because this is being paid for with grant money from the department, from FEMA Department, and it's favors, it's supposed to favor low bid. And our bid was low by a very large margin. The reason we are low bid is because we're based in Cincinnati. My competitor is based in Wisconsin, so our cost of installing this will be considerably less. We have customers all over Northern Kentucky, all over State of Kentucky, all over the United States, and we're actually all over the world. And one of our customers is the city of Earlanger, and we installed a system for the city of Earlanger about, was it about sixteen months ago, eighteen months ago? And to date, we have yet to receive one single service call. System has worked perfectly for the entire duration that this system has been put in place. So, the question I want to ask the committee is that, why isn't Clean Air Concepts earning this business since we've done well over the last eighteen months, and since we are the lowest bid? And we are an American company, with most of the product made within fifty miles of where we're standing. The competitive bid... The competitive bid that they're going to be recommending is actually foreign-made. I believe it's made from Poland. So, once again, I have reservations of the recommendations. I think it should go to lowest responsible builder, bidder, which is Clean Air Concepts. We're a reputable company. We are the only company that meets all the specifications that were put out. So, once again, I ask for, for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next is, I hope I read this right, T.D. Dirker?
Yes.
I couldn't tell if that was an R before the K. Welcome.
Thank you. I've got a doctor's signature. My name is T.D. Dirker. These are my children. We brought three of our seven children tonight. We live on, in the Lakemont subdivision, off of Nelson Road. And you know, there's a lot of connectors there. Actually, we live in the home that originally owned a lot of that land. So there's a, like a gentleman's farm there that we live on. It's about nine acres of land. We own five different parcels. And we've noticed since we've lived there that it's just a very dangerous road. Cars speed down Nelson Road, and there's a couple of crests. It's very blind for people that are on bikes, that are on foot, this type of thing.
Is it after the do-run stop sign? As you're heading into this development?
Yeah, so if you crest over the hill by the fire station, you come up and then you come down to the first stop sign.
Yeah.
And then you continue onto that pond on the left.
Yeah.
Down in Lakemont. It's that area right there. There's a lot of road frontage with a white fence. That's, that's our property.
Okay.
We love it there, but we really cower when we, it's not so much for us. We see different people walking. We don't walk on the road very much because it's very dangerous, but there's people walking. And there's forever, you hear people saying, "Slow down." You know, they're yelling at the cars as they're flying by. Typically, I find that it's either kind of young urban professionals on their cellphone or high school kids that just aren't paying attention. My dog was run over four years ago on that road. The idea that I just would like to do, I didn't want to kind of get any strong sense other than just get this process started, to understand, you know, what either political or financial support my family can give. Could we give our land to have the sidewalk put on our land? I'm really not sure. I'd just like to see if we could create some safe solution. You've done a great job of connecting so many of those neighborhoods back there. And I think really that stretch is really the last part standing that's not connected. And I just, I don't know where to start, so I thought we'd start here.
I drove that today on my way back there to vote, and I was thinking the same thing.
Were you really?
So we'll have, because we're really, we're trying to find sidewalks everywhere that we can and looking for grant money and that sort of thing.
Okay.
So, Mr. Fields, we'll have your name and your number, and we'll start down the road.
And if there's a way that I can help, if I can actually support it in a way of making telephone calls or helping administratively, I'd be happy to push it along.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We've actually began these conversations. Mr. Bogart and I have talked about it a lot, looking out for funds and other people I know in Mr. Chisol's area out there have looked and brought this same thing to our attention.
Okay.
So we are looking at, we will get in contact with you.
But I'm pretty, I'm pretty good at that kind of thing.
Property will be part of that.
Okay.
Love to help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention tonight.
Thank you.
Bringing your children.
There you go. Okay, now, it's time for bids. We have the fire department exhaust system bid. Dave, are you going to make that presentation?
Yes.
All right.
As I announced a couple of months ago, we were awarded the 2013 Assistance to Firefighters grants, and that was for a source capture vehicle exhaust removal system for Station One. The amount of that award was $76,500. Since then, we've put our specifications together. It's gone out to bid. We've got all those back, and we'd like to make a recommendation tonight. That system will attach to the trucks to remove all the toxic exhaust gases from the station to eliminate, you know, our firefighters from being exposed to that. Same type of system that we were awarded on the 2011 AFG. The grant does cover 95% of the funds, with 5% being our responsibility. With that being said, we'd like to recommend the purchase of a plume event system sold through Hastings Air Energy. With options, the total cost of that system is $76,850, just a tiny bit above the awarded amount. We never like to give money back to the federal government, so they don't like it either. That brings our share of the grand award to $4,175.
Is there a desire, has the committee been involved in this grant issue? Because of what Mr. Winkler brought up, do we want to have a committee meeting on this and just make sure?
Yes.
I think yes, because I've got some council members over here asking me how it happened, and I would like to know myself. So I would, I would, I would recommend that we do take it to committee.
All right. Then this recommendation will be received, and there will be a committee meeting of the fire committee, which usually includes us all, but primarily the fire committee. And we will, let's see, today is the 4th and 14th, the 18th day of November? Two weeks from tonight?
Yes.
At 6 o'clock? 6:30? 6:30?
I'd like all counsel on this one because we're spending some...
Sure.
Right.
You got that, Mr. Winkler? The 18th?
You're welcome.
I would think it would be to your advantage.
Starts at 6:30.
It's 6:30 on the 18th. Well, right here. Right here. Okay? Very good.
I would like to have all the bids at the meeting.
Yeah, have all the, all the materials there. Okay, Dave?
Absolutely.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. A bid is received. Is there any reports of work in progress this evening? Yes, Mr. Howard?
Yes, Mayor. I got, we got a Facebook page from you just a couple of days ago about the, about the railroad underpass. And I've been getting a couple, several emails about that from other residents. And I thought maybe, maybe from an open, with an open meeting right, like tonight, we could maybe report on what's going on with that in progress.
It became an issue in the mayor's race when the fellow running for me says he contacted a government relations gentleman for the railroad and said they'd be delighted to split the cost of maintaining the railroad with us of the underpass. So then we, I called, no kidding, his name is Jimmy Carter in Atlanta, but I called, I called Jimmy Carter, who's in charge of all of the bridge, underpass, overpass in this entire region. And Mr. Han got ahold of Aaron, can't think of his last name, who is in charge of, what's his last name, David, do you remember? I have it written down at home, but he's in charge of all of the bridge work, overpass, underpass in the Commonwealth of Kentucky for the Norfolk Southern. And Jimmy Carter told me, "No way, Jose. We do not pay for the way that our equipment work looks. We keep it functional. We keep it structural." But we, you know, what, what looks good to somebody looks bad to somebody else. We don't go down that road at all. And I don't know who your opponent talked to. I don't know either. But David got the exact same information from Aaron, Aaron Meyer is his name, Aaron Meyer in Somerset. And what, and of course, they'd be happy to, we were, we're free to do it ourselves. They're not going to participate in it. But the cost of painting this bridge overpass here is estimated to be half a million dollars. And the reasons that a half a million dollars is that the paint that's on it right now is lead-based. And you have to follow EPA regulations to remove that, which includes stopping the Dixie Highway, encasing the, the bridge in canvas, plastic, whatever they do. The workers who go in to take it off have to wear the gas masks and the hazardous because it's all lead-based stuff. And the estimated cost for that is a half a million dollars. We've applied for grants to do that. We haven't, don't have any yet. We will continue to apply for grants to do that. It was interesting, you know, during campaigns, and we don't know who won yet, and maybe I'm not here in six months, but, but it's interesting to see on a campaign when somebody said they talked to somebody and then they posted as a, as a campaign flyer, "I can fix the bridge in 15 minutes on the phone." And so then I get on the phone and call the people who actually make the decision to write the checks, and they laugh at him. So, that's, that's the report. We, we would love to fix up, to clean up that. And, and, and we have done lots of work on the hillsides over the years and done as nice as we can, but the actual painting of the, or in cleaning up of the, of the trestle of the overpass part with the trains, we can't afford it, and they're not going to do it. So, yeah, Corinne.
Isn't the other issue that also the trains do not have a set schedule, and when there are supplies needed, they just go and they don't change their schedule for...
That happens, that happens sometimes. But they, again, we were told we could do it. They would have to coordinate, tell us when we could do it, how we could do it, and what we'd have to, in other words, it's, it, a money pit is what it would wind up being. So, go ahead, Jim.
One of the major issues, I'm sure you understand real quick, they would have to completely close the, either southbound two lanes or the northbound two lanes to do this work because they can't get the clearance on the bridge by netting it.
Right.
As indicated. So therefore, you'd have to direct all the traffic in both directions under one side of that bridge, an underpass, and it would be a traffic nightmare while it's being done.
And it's not to say that it's not doable in sometime in the future. It won't be done, but...
That's why it's a cost, though.
It's, yeah, it's, the cost is astronomical right now. Does that answer the question, Bill?
That answered my question. I can pass it on, yes.
All right, very good. The next, is there any other business, new business for the good and welfare of our city this evening? Yes, Bill?
I hate to be the talking one. We talked earlier about the seniors, the senior luncheon that's happening up, coming up for Thanksgiving. I also want to let you know that there's also another activity that's going on in the city called Man Emission, and where we, where the, where the less fortunate are fed. And I bring that up because organizations like the Lions are donating our turkeys.